Yeah. You know, she's looking on like. Yeah. Yeah. Like very big. Um, yeah. Um, one of my good friends is in the doctoral program. Oh, okay. And she is a. She owns. Um. She is a. Um, I'll be. Yeah. Yeah. Figure out where. I'm going to drink. I left. Yeah, I did. And I was surprised. I had a test.
I had a. Yes. Maybe she's saying that everyone. Yeah. It's like a. Like chuck. Like four. It's. I don't know. It's on.
Yeah.
I don't know what's. But I don't know. Yeah. Yeah, right. Right. I didn't tell her. Did I do a good job? Yeah.
Nice. I think it's. I told them. Um.
Um. I love.
I say.
Yeah. She's exhausted. So she's like, she said her blood pressure.
Yeah. I glad that she's.
What is the. I was. And so. So the shirt they sent to. And then she gave it to. She's a.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, Jamie works.
Yeah.
Energy.
For my position last week. So. Friday at one thirty. Sorry. Can I tell poetry that I think.
I should share.
I read a lot of really.
I I just see.
Yeah.
Hello. I suppose my poetry got a butterfly.
Yes, the mind's about to try on a weird. We're much.
Okay. It's kind of.
Why? Just. Should we.
This might. Something.
You can use the.
Range.
It's good. Or. Yeah. Now. You're fine. And then I got. There's. Perfect. No. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I completely. Obviously, if I told them. Because. Who knows? Well, good. Yeah.
All right, good evening. We call this April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three business meeting in order. Ask for a roll call, please.
Dr. Campley.
Here.
Mr. Doer.
Here.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett.
Here.
Mr. Fountain.
Here.
Mr. Keenan.
Here.
Dr. Kohler.
Here.
Mrs. Mares.
Here.
Mr. Saylor.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the Perkioman Valley School District is to cultivate an inclusive community of learners empowered to grow intellectually, socially, and emotionally. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. I'm looking for a motion to approve the minutes as presented for March thirteenth and April third, two thousand twenty-three, respectively. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Comments from the audience? Let me know when you get the timer set up. I'll call on each person. I'll I'm gonna call on the people who said they wanted to speak and then open up to general. Just a reminder, three minutes, state your name and what uh what municipality or district building you're from, and we'll start with Aspen Bradley.
Hi, my name is Aspen Bradley, and I am from Skipack Township. It's fairly easy to find examples in comprehensive studies on police-related violence against the queer community from the past, but is exceedingly difficult to find the same centered on today because of how normalized it has become. As we continue to push for a vision of public safety that provides for sustainable and healthy communities, it is crucial to remember that the police and criminal justice system as a whole have long denied people's safety because of their sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender presentation, and have historically targeted LGBTQ people of color in particular. At the same time, LGBTQ plus people of color have an equally lengthy history of bravely countering these abuses and fighting for liberation. Stonewall was not an aberration. Instead, it was a culmination, the boiling point of tension between law enforcement LGBTQ plus communities whose identities were criminalized and who had faced discrimination and harassment under the false pretense of law and order. State-sanctioned police violence persisted in the years before and after Stonewall, as did the resilience of the LGBTQ plus people targeted. Black and brown LGBTQ plus people in particular have been subject to circumstances which there's where their sexual orientation, gender identity, and gender nonconformance and race have all been used as a pretense for police abuse, and their leading voices is resistant and their leading voices is resistant police violence resisting police violence and must be recognized and celebrated. In two thousand twenty, on the anniversary of Stonewall uprising, the NYPD pepper sprayed and struck demonstrators with batons, and in two thousand twenty-one, police clashed with civilians during New York City's Pride Festival. These incidents reflected the proximity of violence in the policing of LGBTQ plus communities in the starkest of ways, that on days of joyful commemoration, law enforcement violence was direct on those celebrating the resilience and strength of the LGBTQ plus community in confronting abuses. This concerning reality undergrits much of the resilience, uprising, and pushbacks to police involvement in gatherings that celebrate pride and beyond. Public safety systems must have LGBTQ plusings identities and people in mind and recognize in the history and particular dangers these communities face when intersected with race. What policies do you have in place to protect our BIPOC and LGBTQIA students when you can't even address the obscene amount of bullying that go on towards students, myself included? I am a student entering my senior year and no longer feel safe in our educational community. You're supposed to be working towards what is best for the students. What are you doing to ensure my safety? What are you doing to ensure the safety of my community? History reports itself. You're failing an open notes test.
Denise Patagoni.
Denise Patagoni, I'm from Skipack. So Nazis banned books, and that's not what we're advocating for. Instead, the question is about what books are appropriate in a school library. Notice I didn't say what books are appropriate for children. That question is best left up to the parents of each child based on their age and other factors. As a Christian who has been paying school taxes to this district for the past twenty-one years, I speak for the parents of Christians and many others who send our children to school to learn how to read and write. I think we all want our children to excel in math, science, history, and the laws of our great country. In the case of Christians, we teach our children that God created everything we see, that the people are that people are fearfully and wonderfully created in his image, and that there are two genders, male and female, and science backs this up. I was here last week when a librarian read an excerpt from a book that she chose for her grade school library about a girl saying she was a boy, and I was appalled. I see absolutely no reason to open children up to question their gender. I have to tell you, when she was finished reading, I was confused. Imagine what five-to-nine-year-olds feel. It's putting ideas into children's minds, and it's a tragedy, to say the least. I had a look around the library the last time I was here, and I found a religious section, but what I didn't find is the most read and bestselling book of all time, the Bible, and I'm not surprised at the hypocrisy. I hear you, that we want a spirit of inclusion. Are you sure that's what you want? Because if so, why is the Christian student's need needs not considered? How about the parents? Are they included? All of them? Or is it only the ones who yell the loudest at school board meetings? The taxpayers expect better. Now, that being said, children should be allowed to be children. Books that contain graphic, X-rated sexual acts rob children of their innocence and have no place in a learning environment such as a school library where children of Christian and other like-minded, tax-paying residents live. Such images cannot be unseen. They get burned into the innocent brains of children who don't have the maturity to process it, and it picks their curiosity about sexual matters predisposing them to early sexual experimentation. And and how do we get from being from people explaining expressing concern over sexually explicit books to being called haters of trans students? I don't understand how we make that that leap, because nobody hates or is against any child in who they are or how they identify. It's about the rights of parents, the rights of tax-paying citizens who want to protect the innocence of children, as it should be. Thank you very much.
Bob Leggett.
Good evening. Robert Leggett, Perkioman Township. Tonight's a night where hopefully we can see something that we haven't seen in a bit, and that's I'd like to see this community come together in some way. There's gonna be the vote tonight on having the school police established. It's an important vote, and I know that it it does tear some of the community apart, but it's also an opportunity for us to, between now and the fall, engage with the entire community to make sure that, even if we don't agree with the timing of it tonight, that we establish and make clear what it is that we as a community want of these people that will be roaming our schools, that are protecting our children. Because if there's one thing I think that everybody here can agree upon, is that it is the protection of our children that is foremost in all of our minds. It is the one thing that may lead us to different conclusions on how to achieve that, but is of the utmost importance. That's much of what's behind the people that are objecting to the books in the library. It's about the safety of the children. This bringing in the school police, again, it's about the safety of the children. And in all these cases, what they share are things where we how we trust the administration, our school board, and the parents around us, and how would they implement these things? The books are brought in by our administration, by our library staff, teachers, and we entrust them every day with our children. Just like when our children are gonna be coming to school in the fall, we're gonna be entrusting their safety to a new group of people, and we owe it to this group of people to make clear to them what this community expects of them. We need to make sure that their jobs are clearly defined and that it's a result of a conversation that happens throughout the community so that we can define clearly what their role will be. Once we do this, hopefully it will become a point of pride for this district, and I hope that everybody can join me in at least saying that the safety of our children's important and doing something right is important. How we do this is going to mean a lot more in the end than what we do. So let's make sure that whatever we do tonight and in the future regarding the safety of our children, whether it be the on the shelves of the books that they read or the safety of them when they walk into this building, let us make sure that we do this in a way where we come together and we can be proud of the decisions that we make. Thank you.
Laura Connor.
Hi, my name's Laurie Connor. I live in Trapboro. This is my first school board meeting. Like many others, I am alarmed by recent board actions. Everyone watching what is happening should be alarmed. We are witnessing attempts at abuse of power to strong-arm unpopular policies through to a vote, blatantly disregarding the appropriate process and timelines for policy proposals. My comment may not impact the board vote tonight or next month when the book ban policy is railroaded through or after that, but I'm commenting anyway because a lot of people watching may not know why all of this is happening. Well, I'll tell you why. Let's follow the money. According to publicly available records, we have board members recently elected that received ten thousand dollars, more than half of their campaign funding from outside donors via the Back to School PAC. These same board members happen to be rapidly pushing through the agenda of this outside PAC using the exact talking points and copycat policies of their donors. None of this originated with residents of Perkioman Valley. Why would these policies to ban books and eliminate Spanish while replacing it with a dangerously rushed, unaffordable, million-and-a-half-dollar police force bringing guns into our schools be on the agenda of campaign funders who don't even live here? I was able to follow the money again thanks to local journalists at the Philadelphia Inquirer, who wrote articles with detailed descriptions of the biggest funders of the Back to School PAC. These are wealthy investors, with one of the biggest funders being a mainline billionaire who spent a lifetime manipulating the system to eliminate taxes for himself and the ultra wealthy and is a major proponent of private schools. Whether the board members are aware of this or not, the policies they are pushing and the controversy surrounding them will be used to reinforce a manufactured political narrative that public schools misuse tax money and are less safe than private schools. These outside campaign donations are a calculated business investment. The return on investment will come later when the destructive result of these policies drives overall voter support and students away from public schools and toward funding of private schools. These policies being forced through are not really about safety or pornography or whatever outrageous talking point they use to scare and divide our district. I want to make it clear to everyone listening that Perkioman Valley School Board should not be a business investment. We are a district that provides quality education as a public service and have already proven to be a solid taxpayer investment back into our own community. If the board will not vote according to the will of PV residents, then I am calling on every single eligible voter to use your votes. I want everyone to research the current school board candidates starting right now. Refuse to vote for those who are beholden to the outside interests using our children as pawns in a political game of sabotage. Vote in May and November and in every local election moving forward until our voices can be represented. Thank you.
Ria Shringhary.
Hello, once again, my name is Ria Shringhary. I'm from Trapboro, and I'm the senior class treasurer. Before I start, I want to express my disappointment in the board and our administration for failing to recognize the multivariate data and models of having armed guards in schools, as well as the often devastating long-term impact of school police officers. According to a research letter published in two thousand twenty-one in the National Institute of Health Database, armed guards were not associated with significant reductions in rates of injuries with an armed guard. In fact, controlling for confounders of location and school characteristics, the rates of death were two-point-eight-three times greater in schools with armed guards. Brookings Institute and other research-based organizations have said that SBOs have been linked with exacerbating racial disparities in justice involvement and youth being driven deeper into the juvenile and adult criminal justice systems. Rather than preventing crime, SBOs have been linked with increased arrests for noncriminal youthful behavior, fueling the school-to-prison pipeline. Meaningful and sustainable change will take time and won't be accomplished by just seven law enforcement officers. As of two thousand seventeen, the National Center for Education Statistics reports that victimization, theft, and violent crime are at a multi-decade low. Student referrals to law enforcement have increased twelve percent in the past two years alone, and arrests have increased five percent. The collateral damages of these arrests is life-altering for many kids, especially students of color. These zero-tolerance policies are disproportionately impacting youth of color by placing them in the justice system. Black students comprised thirty-six percent of arrests in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen school year, despite accounting for only fifteen percent of the student body. Meanwhile, thirty-three percent of those arrested were white, despite despite representing fifty percent of students. I'm a senior. On June ninth, I will no longer be a student at Perkioman Valley, and my thirteen long years here are over. But the futures of my peers, my people, matter too. The people of this school district will always matter to me, so no matter what happens, I implore all of you, please think about their future and listen to science. Thank you.
Jess Coulter.
Jess Coulter, Laura Frederick. First, I want to say that not all children in our district are Christian, but there is definitely a Bible in the high school, I know because I donated it, and Mr. Keenan's wife reimbursed me for it. A lot of people in the community think that the board hates trans students because of memes posted on Mr. Saylor's Twitter feed, so these conversations are not unfounded. According to StopBullying.gov, kids who bully others can also engage in violent and risky behaviors into adulthood. They are more likely to abuse alcohol and drugs, get into fights, vandalize property, drop out of school, engage in early sexual activity, have criminal convictions, and be abusive toward their romantic partners, spouses, or children as adults. You have heard over months and years and tonight in these meetings that our district has a problem with bullying. In school shootings and mental health, Allison Paoli's research indicated that eighty-seven percent of school shooting perpetrators left behind evidence that they were victims of severe bullying. Truly preventing school-related violence takes work. We need SEL programs like School Connect, diverse literature in which all groups are represented, diversity in the history curriculum, again, representing all groups, restorative practices that deal with bullying by bringing the students together with adults to discuss what is happening, and, for the love of everything, more clinical counselors. Punitive punishments like removing recess for not completing classwork or normal childhood behavior, making schools feel like prisons by adding armed guards, and adults dividing the community with their non-acceptance of all the children their tasked with educating is not at all helpful. Additionally, this conversation on school police began very recently, and we still haven't received answers to questions like, if the district hires school police directly, what efforts will be made to ensure gender and ethnic diversity? How exactly will these officers be trained, and who will be providing the training? Will they have firearms governed training governed by the district? Will they receive crisis prevention training? Will they be directed to use de-escalation techniques? If school police officers get themselves into a legal issue, who is liable for damages, and how will that affect our taxes? When will school police be called into action? What guidance will be given to the principals on this? Who will write the policies governing school police? You have consistently used Springford as a model for this police force, but their program took ten years to build. You're pushing to implement this in months, and you haven't even decided where the officers will be housed within each individual building. How can we have faith in this district to make decisions to protect our children when you can't even tell us exactly what weapons the officers will have and where those weapons will be stored? The way in which this and other policies have been rammed through committees has destroyed the credibility of this board with the students and the community members alike and has guarded garnered attention statewide, but is it the right kind of attention?
Luke Pepper. Luke Pepper.
Good evening. Luke Pepper from Perkioman Township. I don't know what book it came from, but it's probably in our library, and hopefully it doesn't get banned, but leading by fear is not leading. It's leading, it's irrational leading. We have a problem with shootings in this country, but the odds of of this school police engaging a shooter are probably minuscule, which leaves a tremendous amount of gap in what is going to happen, what the school police is going to look like. I'm not necessarily opposed to school police, but as Ms. Coulter has said and other people have said, what are the answers to some of our questions? Where's the mental health counseling along with the with the with the policemen? Are they going, how are they going to gauge our students? Are they going to treat black students differently? Are they going to treat transgender students differently? Are they gonna treat gay students differently? We don't have answers to those questions because we don't have any information. This has been rushed through. Mr. Leggett, last week or the week before, said, we do have enough cars for seven people. This is how perfunctory and cursory this review has been. The public doesn't know what's going on, what is happening. It is unacceptable that we don't know what's gonna happen with if a mentally mental student with mental health issues comes engages with a police officer. Is that that police are gonna have enough training to understand what is going on, or are we gonna be allowed to lead by fear and try to understand that student and figure out how to deal with them without using a firearm? These are very, very important questions. These are very, very important questions that have not been answered by this board. It is borderline corrupt not to allow another 30 days for the minority, the four minority members to use their skills and their attributes to figure out what is going on with this policy and whether or not they can support it. We have at least two board members who have spoken who have supported it in the minority, but they're ignored. They're giving rhetorical answers while you're trying to stall. Yeah, they're trying to stall for 30 days to get more information. You have disenfranchised part of this district by voting 5 for on all these controversial subjects. It is ridiculous. School boards are not for culture wars. School boards are for educating our children, making them safe in an environment. How could they feel safe when a certain percentage of them don't feel safe and comfortable in their own skin walking around school? Because this school board's borrowed agenda comes from the central box. It comes from political operatives who have no interest in our students. They have interests in moving their culture agenda along. It is unacceptable in a public school district that this board is so influenced by fear and religion and other things that do not matter. Read a book. Research the issue. Find out what is going on and fix it.
Would anyone else like to speak? Trina?
I'm Trina Sandler, Skippeck Township. I just want to tell a little story. My son turned 16 and he got his permit and he finally got his driver's license and we were so excited. So you know when you go to the DMV and they pass the test, you take the picture, you have the license, you're so excited and you're like, yay, congrats, son. But the next conversation my husband and I had to have with our son is, so, son, if you're ever pulled over by the police, please keep your hands on the top of the steering wheel. When they cut to your window and you roll your window down, ask them, can you go get your license out of the middle console? And can you go into your glove compartment to get your registration and your insurance card? So that was the other conversation that we had with our son. After we were excited about him, yay, finally passing his test, he has his car, we had to have that conversation with him. Now, the reason why I tell that story is, we're going to be voting on the school police, which I really don't have a problem with the school police. But for me, I need to know exactly what is going to be going on. Job descriptions, training, I need a detailed plan to be implemented, to be presented to the community, outlining every single detail about what these school police officers are going to be doing in our school district. Then I will feel that my son and other children that come into the school district will be safe. I don't have a problem with the school police. I'm all about the safety of our children. I understand what's happening in our crazy dysfunctional world, and this is what we need to do. This is the direction that we as a district, the administrators, the staff, you feel that this is the direction that we have to move in. I'm fine with that. I'm a team player. But I need to have a detailed, concise outline of everything so that I can feel comfortable with my brown son coming into Perkyomen Valley School District. That's what I need because half of you, I think only person that could share that story is probably my friend back there, because I'm sure that's the conversation he had with his son too, when he got his license. That's a conversation that most of you probably did not have with your children when they got their license. So I need a detailed outline, I mean, down to the nitty gritty, every single detail you can put in there, I need to see that, for me to have peace about this decision that we want to make. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Shona McGee, Skippeck Township. I have a few things I want to touch on. First and foremost, I believe this is a public school district. There is a separation of church and state. Not everyone is Christian, so knock it off already, just stop. It's rude, it's ignorant. The other thing is to sit here and preach that there are only two genders when you're sitting here looking at my transgender child. How dare you? I'm so angry I can't even see straight. There are more than two genders. Read a book. Read biology. It's in science. The other thing is, what are you going to do to address the bullying situation in this school? We've heard it time and time and time again, there is a no-tolerance policy, it is never implemented. Do something about it. As far as this vote tonight for the police force, where is the policies in place? We know nothing except that it is happening. There is no, the finances, borrow from here, take from there, there's nothing for 10 years down the road. Where's the funding for that? It's not always there. Where are the weapons going to be stored? What type of weapons? Who has access to these weapons? There's no policies in place. How can you vote on something and pass something without the policies in place? Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak? Sir?
Hi, my name is Jim Mean. I'm from Lower Frederick Township. As a former correctional officer, my motto has always been, "In the hardest prison to escape is in your mind." Equity and diversion, inclusion should be a priority as well as mental health. People, when they think of police officers, they think right away a gun. When you think of a prison guard, you think of a person without a gun when they're inside the walls of a facility, because we don't have a gun on us unless we're outside the facility or on a hospital run. I no longer work as a prison officer, but people fail to remember or think about what the police force could bring to the table besides just firearms. There's opportunities for programs for police officers to engage with the student population that some people don't think about, including Dare America, Drug Abuse Resistance, Education Officer Training. When I was a young kid, I remember New Hanover Township in Montgomery County had a Dare Officer. I still have that trading card of my Dare Officer. He has passed away. I don't think they have a Dare Officer anymore. One of the newest things for mental health, I see you guys are adding a psychologist, we have mental health at the jail now, is a therapy dog program. When you think of a canine for a police department, you think automatically a bite dog, a bite dog. No, there are now therapy canines out there, comfort dogs, that walk the halls of schools all across America. They're getting them for police departments, they're getting them for fire departments, ambulance departments. White Marsh Township ambulance department just got one. There's a big article in the Reading Eagle, a former coworker I used to work with, Crewmoo Township Police Department, he has a comfort dog, Oliver, it's a therapy dog, it's a burn-a-doodle. And you can also still train therapy dogs to sniff out drugs. They don't have to bite. It's something that people don't think about as a police department or a security, you're thinking automatically guns. You're not thinking about the bigger picture and what a police department could provide to your students. I don't have children. I want to someday, and I want to make sure the school district that I live in thinks about the bigger picture and the mental health aspect of individuals, because I don't believe we have a gun problem. I believe we have a people person and a people problem, and I believe mental health needs to be the focus on our students and on our faculty or employees. And just make sure whoever becomes the police department for this place, if you do approve this, that they have the proper training, de-escalation. April is Autism Awareness Month. Make sure they have training with people, students with autism and different beliefs, you know, because not everybody thinks the same way. And again, the hardest prison to escape is in your own mind, because what, something you may think about something right now, the way I'm talking or the way I'm behaving, I had no intention to talk today, but after hearing everybody else talk today, this is what I felt like talking about.
Thank you very much.
First, I just want to congratulate one lady sitting back here, right here, who had the talk with her teenage driver. She should be hired by the school district to give instructions on proper tone when making a presentation. She was just excellent, and I want to point that out. But I really wanted to talk about the recent shooting, unfortunately, in the Midwest at a private school, I think it was a religious school, where six people were, human beings were killed, three children and three adults, I believe, or maybe it was four children and two adults. We've all read that it was a textbook operation by the police. They did everything right. They responded quickly in record time. They went to the sound of the guns. They showed courage, did everything they could. Also, the school implemented their lockdown plan, apparently did it perfectly. They had training, and the training did what it was supposed to do. So that was a school doing everything, a police force doing everything. But six people died. The brave principal who confronted the shooter didn't have a gun. The shooter did. The principal died. So I think the lesson there is that even if you do everything right as a school district, if you do not have firearm protection, it's not going to prevent death. It doesn't guarantee death will not occur, but it increases the odds. And that's what you want to do. You want to increase the odds on the side of the children. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Dean Miller from Collegeville. Regarding the proposed school police, the militarization of schools is not the answer. Across the country, there seems to be an obsession with solving problems with guns. The solution to too many guns is not more guns. The focus should be on removing easy access for guns for anyone who should not have one, such as a would-be shooter. If someone gets angry or has an episode, if they can't get their hands on the military-style weapons, they won't be able to hurt anyone or themselves. If there is an ongoing threat, which I doubt, then I believe the township should consider getting a police force. So why should Collegeville or other municipalities have to pay for two police forces? I also have concerns about accountability of the proposed force. Who would be responsible for the actions? Who would take responsibility? Who would they get their marching orders from? This board? I would be hesitant to support a police force with limited accountability to the general public. My problem is not with police, my problem is with police and schools. So this is a major change. Think about it.
I am Peggy Whelan from Collegeville Township, and I wanted to say that I am not 100% one way or the other on whether or not we should have police in the school, but I think as many people have said, I just don't understand. I see PV as one of the leaders, and it looks like from the presentation, we want to be the leader on armed school people. If we go, or armed officers. Springford's our model, they have 11 buildings, seven armed police officers and one unarmed, for a total of eight. We're going to have seven armed plus six unarmed for a total of 13. The only school district that has more than 13 combined is Norristown, and Norristown only has four. When we look at that chart, there's a lot of school districts that are in disenfranchised areas and what people would consider a little bit more risky or dangerous areas, and they don't have the armed police officer. So why are we the leader? Why is PV at risk where the other school districts aren't? That's basically where it breaks down to me. Collegeville Police Department only has eight police officers, yet we're going to have seven in our school. So that seems just, and you know, those eight police officers are 24/7, 365 days a year. The well-equipped cars, we're going to have two cars, as Mr. Liggett had discussed previously. Well, what do two cars even do? Do other school districts have these well-equipped $60,000 cars? You know, are you going to have the rifle in the car? Are they going to take the car home? All of those questions that we're paying for this car year-round, doesn't make any sense. I know teachers are in favor of this, that's a big, I have a lot of teachers in my family, that's a big rider to me. My question is, are they in favor because they don't feel safe in their positions? Do they not feel that our safety at our front door, that we have the right locks, we have the right codes, or are they in need of having somebody in the building? Are we doing this because of the horrible, you know, possible circumstance of an armed gunman coming in, which, you know, as previously has been discussed, unfortunately, even with the best situation, we don't always have the best outcome there, even if somebody does have a gun? Or are we doing this because, according to that report, PV has more incidents than anything else? Do our teachers need this because there are fights in the school? You know, is that something we need to address first? And then the final thing I wanted to mention is that Joe Cersei keeps coming up. We're not in Joe Cersei's district anymore, so I'm going to go back to the line from Mean Girls, which is, he doesn't even go here. Why do we keep talking about Joe Cersei? What do our, I'm not even sure who our correct local representative is, but what does he think of us? So.
Anyone else like to speak? Seeing none. Reports and presentations were given last month. Mr. Schaefer, do you have anything to update? Dr. Russell, anything to update?
I do not.
Any updated solicitor's report?
No.
Any updated district and board committees? Seeing none. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Dr. Kolar, education?
Thank you. Section 4.01 was the education committee last week. 4.02, 3, and 4 are all on consent. Item 4.05 is the motion to eliminate the elementary Spanish program, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I have a second. Discussion? Oh, there we go. Ms. White?
So with regards to the elimination of elementary Spanish, I know that it was discussed during the education ad hoc, and I know it was discussed last week as well. I just wanted to just confirm that we are going to continue to have conversations where we're putting the cultural impact that's being lost by the removal of Spanish as we move forward with elementary specials. I don't know if you can speak to that.
I can speak to that. So our inter-reading anthology, the book at the elementary level, does have excerpts that introduce our students to individuals that are different from themselves and are also part of different cultures. We have also talked about the librarians as part of library to introduce our students to other cultures through reading of books in the library. With respect to Spanish, Mrs. Smith and I are looking at possibilities for students to also participate in language programs through community ed or club programs. And we had talked about this once in the past, where we're updating that investigation, if you will, to also try and support students with cultural experiences around a world language after school or during lunch, something like that.
So I guess I would just ask that as ad hoc, the ad hoc ed committee continues, if we can make that a priority in terms of discussing where that will be implemented, and for example, if it is through a club program, which I think is actually a good idea for the elementary level, that it would be at each elementary school equitably? I know that sometimes there's issues with having, you know, one club at one place because there's not someone to run it at another, and so I just want there to be a uniform commitment to keeping the benefits of this for our youngest learners.
I appreciate the feedback. Noted. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Sorry, I just wanted to say I also am in favor of that. I would love to see Spanish, if it- I would love to see Spanish, if it's not in our curriculum per se, but like we talked about lunch after school, really having students who have an interest in it have that ability to access learning and experience another language. So I appreciate the administration looking at that.
Dr. Campley? Any other discussions? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
I just want to, I know as an audience that it can be frustrating that there isn't more discussion by board on such an important topic, so I just want to acknowledge that as a board, we get a lot of information during the week. And I'll say, for me, the reason that I'm going to vote yes for this is because of our need for ELD staff members, and this is how we can get that. We have so many students in our district where English is not their first language, and they are not getting the support that they need. And the only way that we can hire those additional people is by moving those positions. So I just wanted to say that publicly, because I know it can be very frustrating as an audience sitting and listening.
I do, so I have to say, I was a little disappointed. I had asked last week what the cost differential would be if we were to continue to have Spanish, and the prices that were sent out, none of them included keeping the two Spanish positions. And I'm really, I definitely agree, we need the ELD positions, but I'm not really comfortable with doing a swap-out and removing a program that is definitely setting us back as far as, you know, where we need to be in education in general.
Dr. Kolar?
I just want to say too, that, you know, we've talked about eliminating Spanish several years ago, I don't remember exactly when now, and went around and around about, you know, I don't think any of us deny that there's value in learning a language early. My issue with the program was always that 12, 15 days a year, I believe, is what it comes out to, is not really learning a language, and I would much rather see us implementing things where there's exposure to multiple languages and multiple cultures throughout the curriculum, and not just 15 days of learning colors or letters. You know, to me, this isn't about eliminating exposure to a language, it's about eliminating a program that's not necessarily doing what it needs to do and looking for alternatives to replace it with.
Any other discussion? I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
No.
Mr. Dorr?
Aye.
Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Yes.
Fountain?
Yes.
Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Kolar?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Motion carries. Oh, I apologize. Motion carries. Dr. Kolar?
4.06 was presented last week. 4.07 is a new item. It's a motion to ratify overnight trips. There's a trip for the middle schools, 7th grade to the Pocono Environmental Education Center in June, and a trip for 8th grade to Washington DC in May, and I so move.
I have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
That concludes the section.
Thank you very much. Business. Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Item 5.01 was covered last week. 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 are all on consent. Item 5.11, the recommended action is to approve purchase for food service equipment, and I so move.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
12 and 13 are also on consent. Item 5.14, the recommended action is to allocate the use of COVID reserve funds, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'll bump the floor for discussions. Ms. Evans-Brockett?
I will be voting no for this, because I believe that this should be part of our budget and not part of one-time funds. I worry that by using one-time funds, it makes it easy to cut in future years. And there was a comment last week that it's late in the budget to be adding this, but we've added several other things to the budget that we'll be voting on tonight, so I question that as a rationale. So I will be voting no for this.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
No.
The ayes have it.
5.15 was taken, the action was taken last week, and 5.16 is a report on grants and donations, and I will note that there was an anonymous donation of library books, one of them being the Holy Bible.
Thank you very much. Payment of bills. Mr. Fountain?
Item 6.01, motion for ratification of bills and payroll and authorization of payments, and I so move.
Can you just conglomerate the both of them?
Absolutely. 6.01 and 6.02. I will put those together, make a motion to ratify both.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Mr. Fountain. Professional personnel, Ms. White?
7.01, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are all on consent. 7.9 is a motion to approve memorandum of agreement as presented with the Perkelman Valley Education Association, and I so move.
Is there a second? There's a second? Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
710 is a motion to approve memorandum of agreement as presented for the, sorry, there's a delay. For overnight trips. I don't know why it's not updating on my screen. And I so move.
Any discussion? It's actually, I think it's wrong on the thing, that's why.
Oh. Okay.
710, just, it's approval for memorandum of agreement for PVEA overnight trips. We do have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
So 711 is the approval of the MOU for the girls wrestling coach as presented, and I so move.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
712 is an MOU, motion to approve the MOU for the PVEA equipment manager, and I so move.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
713 is the motion to approve a revision of a job description for the supervisor of health and wellness. Are there any questions?
Need a second first before we-
I didn't make a motion yet. Can we talk about it before I make the motion?
No.
Oh, okay. And I so move.
Is there a second? There's a second. Discussions? Dr. Kolar? Ms. White?
I just had questions, because I did not have the old job description. I didn't have a chance to find it. So I was wondering if you could point out what the differences are. The one thing that stood out to me is I believe the previous one was a 10-month position, and this is a 12-month position, and I saw there was something in there about being part of the threat assessment team. Were there any other major revisions, or did I pick up on the two?
Those are two major revisions. The other one, in talking with Dr. Boyd, that is being recommended, is that the individual also oversee nurses. So as a group, it made sense, when we think about student services, to include them under the leadership of this individual. In addition to the threat assessment team, we've also indicated that the individual will work with our safety and security team, whatever that may look like. That was also called out.
There are no other questions?
No. Any other discussions? Seeing none. Call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
714 is a motion to approve the creation of two new ELD specialist positions. That's the creation of two English language development positions district-wide as part of the PVA agreement. The salary and benefit costs for this position have been incorporated into the 2324 budget projections as presented, and I so move.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
715 is a motion to approve the creation of four special ed teacher positions, three high school special education, and one elementary emotional support as part of the PVEA agreement. Salary and benefit costs for this position have been incorporated into the 2324 budget projections as presented, and I so move.
Any discussions? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
716 is the approval, motion to approve the creation of a new school psychologist position. This will be a district-wide position as part of the PVA agreement. Salary and benefit costs for this position are anticipated to be funded through the MC Montgomery County Office of Health and Human Services grant, and I so move.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yeah, just, yeah.
So I know that we talked about that for this year. Is that grant, like, there's no way to tell that that grant will be ongoing, correct?
That's correct, and I was just noticing that in the motion, it should specify for the-
For this year.
-2324 school year.
Okay. So we'd need to amend that then.
That's an important point. Right now, that's what, that's what we are being presented.
I have a motion to amend, or I have an amendment?
Second.
Well, we need the amendment first by someone on the board.
Withdraw your second.
Yeah.
Withdraw my second.
Second's withdrawn. Do you want to remake the motion?
Sure, absolutely. So I'll just restate it, yeah? The salary and benefit costs for this position are anticipated to be funded through the 2324 school year through the Montgomery County Office of Health and Human Services grant.
Are you okay with that?
For the 2324 school year.
Are you okay with that? You'll have a second, please? I have a second. Discussions? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
When will we find out if we get this grant?
So I heard from actually a representative today, they have pushed off the award date from the end of March to now by the end of April.
Hmm. And what is hiring like for school psychologists right now? Are they in demand?
That's a good question. I think I'll ask Mr. Moran. I am not certain, we are really appreciative of getting the special ed teacher positions approved, because they are in demand, and they are few and far between. I don't know if I can speak to school psychologists, or if Dr. Boyd or Mr. Moran might be able
I'll just share that they are one of the more challenging positions to hire for. However, I've not seen locally what the demand is currently, you know, with other districts for next school year.
Okay. I just, being funded through a grant for one year, we've had this discussion, anytime we do this position, you're not getting the cream of the crop that are applying for that, because it's not a guaranteed position. And I think mental health positions in general right now are pretty in demand. Education positions in general are pretty in demand, so I do have a concern about finding a highly qualified person for this position through a grant that we don't even know if we have yet.
So one of the suggestions that I was going to offer the board is that you could indicate contingent upon the grant if you're comfortable starting the salary and benefits for one year. We've done that for some other positions, and those salary and benefits have then been incorporated into the operating budget. You could include a contingency, or we could hold off until May. We should know by then, if that would be helpful.
I personally would rather just see it be implemented as part of the budget, and if we get the grant, then we get the grant. I don't, I don't feel the need to hold off on the position just because of the grant money. I think that it, we can afford to hire another school psychologist in light of all of the other positions we're approving.
I think that was one of the options Mr. Weaver presented the board over the weekend in terms of the impact.
The motion says the salary and benefits calls for this position are anticipated, doesn't say are.
Right.
So there's nothing against the motion passing now and then finding out if we get the grant, rather than holding it up, because of the wording of the motion is particular with the word anticipated.
I do definitely mirror the concerns that Mrs. Evans-Brockett brings about, is finding someone if they feel like it is a position that's for only one year versus a permanent position where they know, I just, I do think you're going to have a difficult time finding somebody that meets the criteria and the qualifications that you're looking for, when you aren't able to give them a guarantee it's going to be beyond a year. It is definitely slim pickings.
Are we able to remove the language about the grant and just have it be an approved position? Or does it need to be, do we need to have a reference to where it's being funded in the job description?
Well, it currently says that it's anticipated to be funded through the MCO, so it doesn't mean it can't, doesn't mean it has to be funded through the MCO.
Correct.
If we don't get the grant, it doesn't mean it goes away.
I guess that, I guess that would be then, to Dr. Campley's point, how will the, will the position be advertised as just a permanent position, or will it be contingent upon the receiving of the grant? I understand about the language of anticipated.
Mr. Weaver, how do you have this in the budget for July 1?
So once this would be approved, then I would adjust in May for the actual cost of the position, and by then we should know if we're, what kind of grant dollars we'll be getting on the receiving end to offset this, or if there's some sort of a situation. So I would simply show it as an adjustment in May when we do preliminary budget approval, and then hopefully we'll know the grant.
But again, that's back of the housework, so I guess my question really is whether or not, whether or not we're going to be reimbursed for it through a grant, I guess. That's really what the question is, is how the position will actually show on our books.
Right. And we have done this before with the high school counselor position, where we were very transparent about that with ESAR funds, that the position was initially paid for with the funds and then would be worked into the budget, and that has occurred. So we would most likely do the same unless the board commits to set aside the grant funds. If we get them, great. If we don't, that's okay too. This will be just like the other positions that you've just recently approved, part of the budget.
That's what it currently says though, because it says anticipated. It doesn't say that it has to be paid for by the MCO.
Right.
Dr. Kolar?
Well, and when we're advertising this position, we're not necessarily going to say that this is a grant-funded position, correct? So it may, I would hope that wouldn't affect the candidates.
Yeah, there's nothing in the job description that says it's a grant.
Yeah, I think I'm comfortable, as long as it doesn't say like it's a yearly contingent upon another grant. You know, it's on an LTS position, it would be considered a permanent position. I think you're going to get more applicants.
So I appreciate us articulating that more overtly. We can't hire LTSs per school code, and we wouldn't want somebody to be wondering about the longevity or the security of the job. So you are correct in pointing out, we don't advertise it necessarily that way. It is a position with some support initially in the other case, but it will not necessarily be advertised that way, leaving people with a question or wondering.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
717 is on consent, and that ends the section.
Thank you very much. Support personnel, Mr. Keenan?
All right. We have 801, 802, 803, 804, 805, 806, all on consent. And 807 is the approval of school board, school police officer positions. So we have a request to approve creation of seven school board police officer positions. I move to approve school police officer positions as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
So I have a couple of questions, but in light of comments we've heard tonight and the five hours of meeting we had last week, I'm wondering if there could be a consideration to amend this motion- to amend this motion that the hiring be contingent upon creation of rules, responsibilities, and policy around these positions.
Mr. Dorr, do you accept that amendment?
I do.
I appreciate that, so.
You okay with that? I'm okay with that.
Want me to ask the rest of my questions first?
Yes.
So, along those lines, some of the things that I just want to make sure that, okay.
Hold on, one second, I apologize. Mrs. Weiner, do you have that as well? So, the new motion is, motion to, the motion that we're talking about now is motion to approve school police officers positions as presented with the caveat of that no SPO.
Contingent upon.
Contingent, I apologize, no SPO can be hired until?
Policies, rules, and job dis, like, I don't know how you want to, regulations, responsibilities, roles and responsibilities.
Mr. Dorr?
Does that make sense when you read it back?
A motion to approve school police officer positions as presented, contingent on policy of rules and responsibilities around these positions.
You go with that?
Yeah.
Matt? All right, I'm sorry, good.
So, along those lines, uh, some of my questions include, um, what will be done with regards to the MOUs we have with our current law enforcement relationships, understanding that they probably will need to be updated reflecting the incorporation of a team that the district employs. I'd like to understand more about the chain of command during an emergency, if there is an emergency on site and everybody reports, like all hands on deck, who will be in charge? Will it be Mr. Miller? Will it be the state police? You know, how will the hierarchy of, um, responsibility take place in the, in the midst of a crisis? Obviously, we would like to talk about this in policy committee based on the creation of the policies with input from all of our stakeholders. That means students, staff, faculty, uh, community members, uh, in a varied way. I just want to make sure that there are equal voices in the room. And then the other, uh, question that I had was with regard to, um, after the hiring process, what the evaluation process will be. Obviously, that would be part of the job description and the policy, but I just want to make sure that, um, to one of our, you know, Mrs. Satter's point, that this is a conversation that is in black and white, um, not just best intentions, once it's actually implemented in putting the right people in place. So, those were just a couple of the questions that I had with regards to, um, that, and I do appreciate, uh, Mr. Dorr, you allowing the amendment.
Does anyone want to answer something?
I just want to, Ms. Weiner, could you read the amend, the amended motion back, please? I just want to be sure it's clear.
Motion to approve school police officer positions as presented, contingent on policy of rules and responsibilities around these positions.
Okay, so I, I would, right, so I, I would just suggest to the board, we revise that a little bit.
Hold on, because you're not a board member, so.
Okay. That's true.
Yeah, maybe it could be like, um, contingent upon.
That's okay.
Policy creation and development of the, I don't have my microphone on.
I'm sorry. Uh, contingent upon policy creation and development of the roles and responsibilities for SPOs within the school district? Well, I, I want that to just be clear that we won't hire until we have those things in place.
Yeah.
She still wants the language to be different. All of it, that, that's exactly my point, is that this is being approved normally, like, for example, the health and wellness position that we just approved the revision for, normally when we approve a position, we have all of these things in place and none of that is in place. So, I just want to be very clear that approving these positions, it's, it's.
Before we get to that, let's, can you reread the amended motion?
Yeah, but that's, but.
And then confirm that there's a second?
To Mrs. Mayor's point, that's exactly my point. I would say approving.
You want to read it back, so?
Motion to approve school police officer positions as presented, contingent on approving policies and administrative regulations.
And?
And development of roles and responsibilities of SPOs in the district.
Yep, you go with that?
Does that cover all of the things that are not figured out?
Madam Solicitor, you're good? All right, now we can go back to discussions on the motion. Mr. Dorr made the second. That's why I asked the Solicitor, she said he was okay. Mm-hmm. Just to confirm, Mr., Mr. Keenan made the motion, Mr. Dorr made the second. Who needs to approve it?
It's okay for Mr. Dorr.
Correct, yes, because he made the second.
Yes.
He could consider it an unfriendly and then we could go to a different route. All right, we're back to discussions. You have questions, you want to give answers?
I think Mr. Miller is working on the MOU conversations with our local police forces. As the board is aware, we have had some very informal conversations with one of our local police forces. We have an MOU with all three police forces, Lower Frederick, the state police, as well as Collegeville. Even though Collegeville doesn't technically serve any of our school buildings because we don't have a building located in the borough, we do have MOUs with, with each of them and it's really Mr. Miller that facilitates that discussion. I think the chain of command conver, question is, is a good one and I would defer to Mr. Miller to address that in terms of who has jurisdiction over an incident, which I think is what you're asking. And then the accountability piece, I have started discussions around what the evaluation looks like. So, if these individuals become employed, the expectations need to be very clearly delineated as part of the documentation that's developed, policies, administrative regs, and the evaluation should reflect that. And they will be held accountable through that performance evaluation on an annual basis. So, I don't know if Mr. Miller, if you can address at all a chain of command question, that would be helpful.
Thank you, Dr. Russell. In regards to how the chain of command would typically work, so we operate under the structure of the incident command system, or called ICS. So, that's developed federally, it trickles down to, all the way to municipalities. So, it's a format that we're familiar with. We use it all the time with regards to operations that involve the limerick generating station, those drills, um, all the processes that are in place. If you could envision, uh, incident command as it relates to, let's say, how the district functions, so we have someone in charge of special ed, we have someone in charge of operations, we have someone in charge of, you know, different functions as we go along. An emergency incident would not be any different. It would be dependent upon who has the ultimate authority underneath whatever is existing at the time. So, if there were a fire in our building, obviously the authority would fall on the fire chief to work cooperatively with all of us and all the responding agency. If it were a law enforcement issue, that in this role, if we go this route, could fall upon us or we couldn't draft that MOU to say, we're going to handle it to a certain level and if it's, I don't know, maybe we choose a felony. If we think it's a felony case, we're going to work together and turn it over to the appropriate authority. That could be any of the law enforcement jurisdictions within the county. One of the other ways we could cooperatively work through that is with our district attorney's office. He is the chief law enforcement officer in the county, so we can help craft that and see what it looks like. Our partners that already do this have MOUs in place and they are somewhat flexible when it comes to this kind of negotiation with regards to incident command. There was an incident not too long ago at Marstown. They're multi-jurisdictional like we are in their district and even one of their schools actually straddles two jurisdictions, so that got a little crazy, but law enforcement worked together at that point along with the personnel at the school to bring that together. So, I'd love for it to go perfectly if we had an incident. A lot of times, it's going to look like a, a very messy process, but the way incident command works and the training that have been afforded to our first responders, we can isolate those things, work them out in such a manner so everybody knows their role. And by operating under that framework, it's something that is understood from the top down and the bottom up. So, my role might be a very involved one on a particular incident and on a separate incident, it might be something where we're supporting responding agencies, whether it's police, fire, EMS, or public works, or the county on the trail or something like that. So, but we can craft that to be situationally dependent.
So, and I think that'll be very important because with regards to the, the roles and responsibilities, I, I think that when push comes to shove, I, I personally would rather have you in charge of making decisions rather.
Right.
Than an outside entity, which I realize though may have more authority statewide in some aspects. And I think that that's one of my biggest concerns, is that there'll be a decision made that is not actually in the best interest of our, of our PV community if it's not us making the decision.
Right.
And, and Mr. Miller, I just want to say thank you for all of the deli, the diligence and the work that you have done in rolling this out, um, in the short amount of time to us. I, there are many more conversations to be had, um, but I sat on a PSBA webinar on this topic on Tuesday after last week's meeting and, um, what you have been able to provide us in just presentation and public comment is, is such, it's head and shoulders above what I was able to garner from, from that statewide training. So, I just want to say how grateful I am that you are here in our district and all of the work that you've done for us.
Thank you.
Sincerely.
You're very welcome.
The discussions? Dr. Campley?
So, I will definitely, um, copy that sentiment. I am very appreciative. You have been, you've opened my eyes in ways that, you know, I was very much against any type of school police force, um, prior to the presentations and prior to, um, hearing Springfield, and I think Springfield has an excellent program and I would love to see Parkland Valley get to a point where we have that program as well. And I appreciate also Ms. White's, um, the way that she has amended the, the vote to be that we need to have the policies and things to be contingent upon that because as you wouldn't get into a plane, um, while it's being built, I wouldn't want to get into this situation. With that being said, I think about, okay, well, who builds the plane? And, you know, when you're having a plane be built, you have your, you, your mechanics, you have people who are trained and well-versed. And while I trust Dr. Russell, I trust you, I trust administration, I trust the teachers who are advocating that if we're going to do it, we do it well, I do think we're doing two different things. One, a little bit of a disservice that there are so many people who have reservations in the community that we're going full force with everything. You know, I understand the teachers are saying, we want it done, we want it done right, and I will absolutely agree with that. I just don't know that right necessarily means doing so much so fast. I think maybe a softer approach with less, um, and help build trust within the community would be a better approach so that, so that students and parents and staff can build and grow and have that comfortability that they have at Springfield. That's, so for my, um, for me, that's why I will be voting no tonight. I'm also voting no because I am thinking about the mechanics that would be putting the plane together. And quite frankly, in my short time on this board, I have seen the, um, the approach where there was an attempt to have the equity and policy, or equity and inclusivity, uh, policy removed. There has been an attempt to bring about banning of books, which, um, the books that were on the list to be challenged were very, very clearly.
Your discussion has nothing to do with the motion, you're saying?
Um, I can, you need to stop. I'm giving the reason behind my no.
First of all, point of order.
You don't like me talking because you know that I'm talking about the book challenges and how it relates to school policy and police.
Your, your discussion has nothing to do with.
My.
Excuse me. Your discussion has nothing to do with the motion. The chair is saying that you need to move on.
Okay, I'm going to move on. You're welcome. Um, I will be voting no because I don't trust that there will be policy pushed through that will consider the fact of our black and brown community, of our students, of marginalized and minorities, of our LGBTQ plus. I don't feel that there is enough people, especially people that I know would be voting on things that would be pushed through, that have a history of, um, pushing through things that are building a, dismantling a public education that have clearly stated that they are anti-LGBTQ and have put marginalized comments out there in public media. And those are the same people who would be my mechanics, quote unquote. And I don't have trust, unfortunately, in members of this board that they would adopt and approve policy that would keep those individuals safe. So, while I trust you, Mr. Miller, I don't trust others and for that reason, my vote is no. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Ms. Evans-Brockett?
Thank you. Um, I had sent an email in regards to some information we had gotten in the memo, um, and Dr. Russell just mentioned that you had a, a informal meeting with Lower Frederick to discuss the possibility of an SRO at West and at, at Shranksville. Um, and then you, um, shared with Mayor Wright Riggins that you're setting up a meeting with Collegeville, um, to possibly discuss an SRO at South. So, my question in the email had been, why, um, these conversations are happening after we would approve these positions? Um, so if you can help me to understand that and are these SROs that you're possibly discussing in addition to the seven that are being asked for tonight?
So, the SRO conversations have come on a little bit later because initially, when Mr. Miller and I have participated in previous public conversations, the state police were pretty clearly not interested. They are spread thin over the eight areas that they provide oversight. We made a presumption based on some historical conversations with Lower Frederick, they are a part-time force, that they weren't interested in an SRO or a partnership like that. They, they have since reached out to us and we started a conversation. It's not formal yet, but sharing some ideas. So, they expressed an interest that we didn't know they had when these conversations began. And we also talked about before Mayor Wright Riggins reached out, Mr. Miller was planning to reach out to him and also schedule a conversation. The challenge is with Collegeville, we don't have a school in the borough, so there is a question about under the law, we, we being able to actually serve a school that isn't otherwise served by that force. And Mr. Subers is looking into that and will follow up for us. The SROs would not be in addition, they would substitute for school police officers in some of this preliminary thinking. And again, we're exploring the idea, the more we talk about SROs, in comparison to SPOs, there are pros and cons that we need to tease out, but we would like to provide Collegeville and we would like to hear from them about their thoughts regarding a partnership if it's permissible under the law.
I guess, um, so we are being asked tonight to approve seven SPOs, but you're saying that these are conversations that are going to happen after this vote for the possibility of, of SROs that, that would then take the place of some of these SPOs that were being asked to approve tonight?
So, I wouldn't say they would take the place. I think we've talked about a staggered implementation. We have work to do before anybody would be hired. The contingency in the motion is extremely helpful. So, I would not suggest we put ourselves in a position where anybody would have to be replaced. I think we're going to know pretty soon whether or not it's even feasible or possible with Collegeville or with Lower Frederick considering Shranksville. And that was our question to them. And then from there, we need to consider the details of an SRO versus an SPO. So, to your question, and it's an important point as we head down this path, if that's where we're going, we would not hire seven SPOs and then have to substitute them with SROs. SROs.
I'd just like to point out that I think this is why our community is having such trouble. Because we have, we made the presumption that Lower Frederick would not want to partner with us, so we didn't even reach out to them. The mayor of Collegeville had to reach out to us. We have not done our due diligence. We have not made our community feel like we know what we're doing. Again, it very much concerns me that we feel like we have to vote on this in April when we're not even looking to implement this until the fall. It's been in the budget since the budget was first presented, so it's not a budgetary issue. This is, for whatever reason, we have, feel the need to rush this through without having the proper conversations. But I'll move on. In addition, in our memo, you shared information from various principals. Two of our high school principals mentioned that there's a huge concern that the district has not yet addressed the entranceway for the high school. Not having that secure vestal leaves us vulnerable to intruders. Once a person is buzzed in, they have access to the entire student body. What are we doing to address that safety concern?
So we have talked about moving that greeters desk into the space between the two sets of doors. That's one idea. It's a little bit tighter. So there has also been an idea of adding another set of glass doors. But there hasn't been an architect, or there hasn't been a final drawing that's been developed. But those are some of the ideas around what to do.
So again, I mean, when we first talked about this in public, I asked the question of, have we done everything we need to do to secure our buildings? Clearly, we have not. And I find it very disappointing that we haven't even started having that conversation. I wasn't even aware, as a board member, that that was a concern that our high school administration had. So the idea that we're just gonna throw in some armed officers to make things safer when there are clearly things that we need to be doing for our buildings, again, I just, I think we are losing the trust of the community.
Any other discussion? No, sorry. I didn't see you.
So referencing that same memo and information, I did find it very helpful to hear from all the administrators anonymously, that they are in full support of school police officers. And some of them said sooner rather than later.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
Yeah, I don't think that that's what was said, actually. But I won't have that argument. But I did also forget to mention, we finally got the opportunity to get some information from Mr. Willis today, our Director of Equity and Inclusion, or whatever his title is. And that was something that several of us have been asking for, for quite some time. And I'm hoping all of the board had a chance to read that, because he presents some definite concerns. I don't think you were included on the email originally, and I did include you, so I'm hoping that you read it as well. And again, this is a place where I feel that we have failed in not including our one black male administrator in these discussions. We are talking about the safety of all students. And I get, I get the fears. I get the concerns. We're having mass shootings on almost a daily basis. But, you know, Mr. Willis's first sentence is, "The introduction of an SPO/SRO to a space with the intent of providing safety does not provide safety to all." And that's the part that we're missing. We have students who have had negative interactions with law enforcement. I'm guessing that most of us at this table have not had those negative interactions. But some of our students have, and we have not considered those students as we're rushing to implement this.
So make sure we're all on the same page, what this says here. So no accusations are laid out. Elementary level, approved of the SPO. Second school, 100% in favor. Third school, in favor. Move on to middle level, not opposed. One school, second school, not opposed. High school, only high school in our area without this. We become a soft target. Second school, or second principal in the high school. I agree with the sentiments above. I don't see, unless I read the memo wrong, maybe I did, maybe I forgot how to read, any administrator saying that they are against the SPO. None. And the one thing that really, to my core, irks me is there is some type of connotation that some people in this community care about everybody, and some people don't. And that's, I think that's wrong, as board members spout out. I think it's wrong as board members to openly flout that individuals or administrators haven't done their job. I think that's abhorrent discussions to have. Each one of us has a community of people that they talk to. Every one of us. And we each represent that community to the best of our ability. We received letters today from parents who are people of color in favor of SPOs. I was with four sets of parents yesterday. I didn't hear one negative comment about a SPO. I am around the student body immensely because of what I do at Lower Park Little League and my activities at the YMCA. There are people of color in those organizations. I see students from this school district from all different ways of life, from Lower Frederick, Schwenksville, to skip back to Collegeville, whether it's on a ball field or whether it's at the YMCA. Some of us talk to a lot of people. I have actually knocked on doors to get the community's involvement on SPOs. And I've met people who are against it, and I have met people who are for it. To talk as though we ignore people, to make those accusations, is tiresome. So let me be clear. The superintendent's confidential memo that's sent out does not have one administrator against the role. I'll repeat it again. Elementary school. In regards to adding SPOs, I have heard so many parents in the last couple of weeks mention their support of this. And this person's in support. The second person, 100% in support.
If you want to read it, read the entire thing.
You are interrupting the chair, which I know you don't like being done to you. So I'll call on you next, when I'm done.
So when you're done putting your ego away?
Come to order, please. Again, 100% in favor of this. We're not asking their personal opinions. We're asking their educated opinion as administrators. And to a T, they have said that they are not against this. Ms. Evans-Brockett, you now have the floor.
I don't think I ever said that they said they were against it. I'm saying, you have one saying, "I am 100% in favor." Absolutely, I'll give you that. The other ones are saying they're keeping their opinion out of it. They're saying that we need additional mental health supports. They're talking about we need to, that we would benefit from more counselors, social workers, mental health supports. Yes, the school police can be a positive. I'm happy to discuss this further. The middle school principal, all you wanted to say was that they said, "I am not opposed." Let's go on to the, however, I do share the same concerns expressed by others regarding the school-to-prison pipeline, potential negative impact on school culture, in particular, the negative effect on students of color, LGBTQ students, special needs students, and other marginalized groups. Again, nobody is saying absolutely against this. We're saying, let's plan this out thoughtfully. Every one of us has said that we're open to this idea, that we see the need, we understand why people, why there is a fear, why we're talking about having armed officers. All we ever asked for was to have it planned out, to have the necessary discussions, to not rush this through. That's all it's ever been. This is not about yes or no. This is about being thoughtful.
Any other discussions? Dr. Kohler?
So I'd like to go back to the comments about the possible SROs. Because that, I guess I'm stuck on, again, like, if we approve seven, but then you're saying there's the possibility that we could have SROs at South. We don't know that yet, but we're looking into it, and possibly at Schwenksville and West. So I just hesitate to approve seven, and then maybe we find out in a couple of weeks that we could get these three, and then maybe we really only need to hire four. So I'm just wondering how that works. If we approve seven, and then we find out we do have these other resources available to us. So again, like, as Mrs. Evans-Brockett just said, I'm not against this. I'm just, I feel like there's still so many things we need to work out, and especially that issue. Like, that, to me, is really intriguing, to have these conversations and find out, can we do a mix of school police officers and school resource officers, and what would that look like? I'm not saying that that's the answer, but I'd like to know what that might look like before jumping in to approve seven. So I don't know if you have these conversations scheduled, if it's something that can happen soon, and we could talk about this next month, but I'm just, again, feeling like we haven't done our homework here, and there's still other things that are being explored, and I want that information before I make this important vote.
I just want to remind everybody that we had these conversations. And just to tell the crowd that thinks that we didn't now, because of what was just said, that's 100% incorrect. We had in-depth discussions about SROs and why Collegeville could not serve South, and they cannot. They do not have the jurisdiction. It is absolutely impossible, absent the change of the will of the people of Trap, for Collegeville police to get there. And Lower Frederick does not have the manpower to administer. And we also talked about it, even if the possibility that they would. The board as a whole, we delved into this for many, many minutes in executive session, discussing personnel issues with administering the West, that Lower Frederick could cover West. And we discussed it at length, all of us, all of us. We were all there, having these discussions at length about SROs, and deciding, all amongst us, that it was best if we proceed with the SPOs. So just so everybody knows what we all discussed, which has not been disclosed to you, including the person that just opened their mouth.
So can I address that? Yes, we had executive sessions, but again, at the time, it was said to us that Lower Frederick did not have an interest. So I didn't think it was a possibility. Now we're hearing they are possibly interested. So the information has changed. So maybe that was your perception of it, but my perception of it was, it wasn't on the table, and now it maybe is. So to me, that's different than what we discussed during that executive session you're referring to. So I think it's something that we should think about and talk about. And again, I put it out of my mind because we were told it wasn't even a possibility, and now we're hearing maybe it is.
I'm sorry. Dr. Russell, then Dr. Campley?
Just to answer your question, Dr. Kohler, I think we will have information by May, by the next meeting. We're meeting with Collegeville this week. And again, Mr. Keenan has shared, the possibility of them serving in that capacity doesn't sound like it's possible under the law. But Lower Frederick continues to be interested. They're having some informal conversations, and we'll be following up with them.
Dr. Campley?
I think it's important to note, too, that when we had those executive sessions and these ideas were first being floated out to us, we were having presentations for the first time. There's a lot of information that, again, I've said this before, I went from absolutely can't imagine this to, wow, this is something that I could see being a thing. It was also before we had the community who came out and had an opportunity to speak, students' voices. We didn't have any of that information prior to executive session. And since then, we've had a lot of people come out to speak, a lot of emails, and a lot of fears from the groups that are most likely going to feel targeted. And Mr. Willis's email with the things and considerations and concerns that he has really does mirror a lot of what the community said. It has data in there, speaking to, you know, belonging uncertainty. He talks about Maslow's hierarchy and how that's a part of it. He talks about the school-to-prison pipeline. He talks about racial battle fatigue. So he brought up things and concerns, the community's brought up things and concerns, and I'm fearful that we're not taking all those considerations in to account and being thoughtful. We're rushing, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're making a decision that started being discussed in February with the community, and it's only April now, for something that is a huge decision and a major culture change for this community. And I just think it's very unfair of us to try and roll out something full-fledged without taking those considerations into account. Because executive session is just us floating ideas and getting information, but it's not getting to the heart of what the community's looking for.
Ms. White?
So I think that, just if we could just, maybe just move forward a little bit, that it has been, it's been exhaustive that we are of a differing opinion of what a lot of conversation was about. I am, however, not in favor of SROs, just so we're on the same page. I think that without the vetting process that Mr. Miller is going to help guide us through, along with administration, and the Safety and Operations ad hoc, and Policy Committee, and the development of all of that, we need to have control over the people that are working for our district with our kids, and I don't think SROs accomplishes that. And so I'm not in favor of that, first of all, just as an aside, since that came up.
Thank you.
But the other thing that I think that we all can agree on is that there has not been a year-long conversation, and there are very many gradient of opinions. I think all of us, except maybe Mr. Fountain, has voiced his opinion on the matter. So ultimately, with the policy piece of this motion, along with the AR and the roles and responsibilities piece of this motion, we have to move forward to, at least in good faith, have that piece of things contingent upon hiring. And I'm comfortable moving forward, this is gonna move forward regardless, guys. It's like, this is a majority, majority rules here. We're nine, and five votes wins. So I appreciate the desire, in good faith, to amend the motion. I think that's helpful. I think we have policy meeting on the 18th. We have Safety and Operations on the 20th, I believe, if that's the firm date. And I implore the public to come out, hold accountable, ask questions, help craft the policies, the job descriptions. Our administrators work very, very, very hard, in good faith, for our community, despite nine people's votes. So that is my wish, moving forward. And if we could just, you know, move it along.
Any objection to a call for a vote? Roll call, please.
Oh, read the motion first.
Yes, please.
Motion to approve school police officer positions as presented, contingent on approving policies and administrative regulations and development of roles and responsibilities of SPOs in the district.
Go ahead.
Okay. Dr. Campley?
No.
Mr. Dorr?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans-Brockett?
No.
Mr. Fountain?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Dr. Kohler?
No.
Mrs. Mayers?
Yes.
Mr. Saylor?
Yes.
Ms. White?
Yes.
Motion carries. 8.8 is on consent, and 8.0... I apologize, that's your job, bub.
8.808 is on consent, and 8.09, we have a memorandum of agreement between PVESPA. I'm going to make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement. Some amendments were requested by administration.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
That ends the section.
Aye, aye, aye. That ends the section. Mr. Dorr?
Thank you. 9.01, first reading of policies, 122, 137, 137-1, 137-2, 137-3, 246, 619, 625, 716, 810.2, and 8.18. 9.02 is on consent. That ends my section.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Comments from the audience?
Good evening. My name is Alicia Evans. I'm from Skibak. I have two students here at the high school. I just want to remind you all, we keep having students come up and talk about bullying within the school. It is sad to watch you all bully each other. It's disrespectful. It doesn't provide anything for our students. And we've become a laughing stock. I work across the county and I constantly hear, huh, PV. I think we need to do better, regardless if you're on the left or on the right. Our students deserve better. We deserve better. You deserve better for each other. It's a lack of respect. And it's just sad.
Todd McKinney, Collegeville. Um, wow. This is a lot. But I guess one of the things that I'm reminded of, and, and thank you, Mr. Saylor, for your comments tonight in regards to the implication that people view the board in a certain way because of what's being discussed. I'm reminded of a few months ago, a board member stating that inclusivity and diversity education in the district hurt white kids. Do you see me? And that's not rhetorical. Do you see me? So when you, when I hear those statements, that tells me that there are kids in this district that are not being seen. Also, when I see the sacred texts of the Abrahamic traditions, which also includes Judaism, Christianity, and Islam, waved around and talked about so much in these meetings. It makes me think, you do not see every student. The purpose of this board is to educate every student. That student. Mrs. Sadler's student. And my son. And I've been before this board before and told you, the number of times my kid's been called the N-word? I just, shame. Shame.
Luke Pepper, Perkham Township. I, I want to, Mr. McKinney, I believe is his last name. I, I, I understand what he's saying. And I understand that, you know, we have a lot of board members here to want to move this policy forward. And we have a 6-3 vote instead of a 5-4 vote. And I have said over and over that we need more consensus on controversial policies. I think we need to circle the fact that there was a, uh, that this is contingent on development of policies. I think that the four minority members should put a, a microscope on the majority members and make sure that the policies and procedures match the values of our community. Protecting marginalized people, um, including gays and, and African-Americans and Latinos. People who don't speak English as a first language. Is there going to be a barrier between a police officer and, and a student who, who may not understand what that police officer's saying? We don't, we are, we are concerned because of the talk of the majority of the board. We are concerned that one of the board members doesn't believe equity and diversity is important. He doesn't believe is, that, that we should have civil rights laws. So when you all sit here and say, oh, this should be not, we should not be standing here making arguments about, and we all should be nice to each other. Did you not listen to how people talk to each other? Ms. Campley was shouted down. Point of order. Well, here's a point of order for you. You will all elect and you're accountable to us. That includes the fascists on the board. That includes the Marxists on the board. Y'all don't know what it means. You don't know what it means. Stop using words you don't mean. And stop with your ego. If, if you want to talk about your background, have it relate to something other than, other than your own ego and pushing your political values. It, this, this community has had enough. We don't trust the board because you have a 5-4 majority and you push it through regardless of the consequences. Gay, straight, transgender, black, white, they're children. They're not adults. They don't want to be a part of your culture war. They don't want, see, they don't want Central Bucks's positions. They want you to educate them. They want to be left alone. The right to be left alone is, can't be any more American. Stop arguing that there's no more, that we don't need more policies to protect marginalized people. We absolutely do. So I implore the minority of this board and the majority of the board who don't believe in undemocratic principles, non-democratic principles, to watch the policies and procedures that are adopted by this board since they just approved the police force in our school district. No, we don't trust you. We think that you are corrupt and you don't listen to the community.
Judy Lofton from Skibak. I wanted to follow on, on the conversation that just came up this evening in the public about implementing SROs as a possible option to the SPOs. While I realize that this could be a cost-saving measure, I think that the SPOs are by far the preferable option. There's an article published by the National Education Association that came out, um, in 2022. It says that research shows that SROs do little to reduce on-campus violence or mass shootings, and their presence is often damaging to students of color and students with disabilities. Having SROs in schools can actually create higher rates of behavioral incidents and spikes in suspensions, expulsions, and arrests. And I'm skipping ahead. It says meanwhile, incidents of SROs using excessive force of students have driven stronger opposition to their presence and raised fears that they make schools less safe. So I think through the discussion that's been presented in public, we've looked at the spring forward model, which is the SPO. And part of what was really eye-opening to me when the, the spring forward officers presented to the community was that they said that they needed time to, um, really decompress and assimilate to an educational environment. That there's really a whole frame shift or a paradigm shift in the way that they are interacting with the populations that they're serving. And my concern with the SROs, and I think part of the reason why you see these much more negative outcomes with them is because they are shared with the school environment and then with the environment of the general public. And so that paradigm shift, that shift in perspective and in how, uh, police officers are interacting with their populations, that we want them to acclimate to our world. Um, we don't want them bringing back and forth with all those different things that they're seeing in the outside world. So I would strongly encourage the board to, um, remain with the SPO approval. Again, recognizing that there could be some cost savings with the SRO. I don't think the, the savings that that would generate would be worth that, um, direction. So, thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah, Aspen.
Hi, my name is Aspen Bradley, Skibak Township, again. Um, hi, I exist. Um, I'm here in front of you all. Um, the world sees me. Um, most people in the world see me. So having parents in the district not see me is a bit devastating, but I feel sad for them. Um, because I, I think I'm, I'm living pretty fabulously, just being alive, existing. So, like I said, it's, it's kind of sad. But Judaism, historically, also has more than one gender in it. Especially much older Judaism. Um, so pretending and hiding behind your Abrahamic faith is just Christian extremism, which is not promoted in a light way in our education. In fact, we're learning about it right now in global studies. And all that we see is the harm from religious extremism. Because religious extremism takes the learnings of religion and uses them in a very specific way to manipulate those around them and to promote harm. Um, it's hiding behind a shield of lies. So, I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes.
Oh, gosh. Hello, my name is Ria Shingari, Trapboro. And I want to say, my dad came here to this country in 1989. He came to this country with nothing. And he is an immigrant. I'm a second-generation immigrant. Both of my parents are immigrants. They did not come to this country for this, for what we're doing right now. For the disarray and disorganization and bickering of the school board. It's honestly quite disappointing. And if my parents were sitting here today watching this meeting, I know they would also be very disappointed, knowing that their taxpayer dollars go toward a board that act thoroughly like children at times. And, um, I really hope to see that we will listen to the community more and our students and teachers more, and get thorough feedback and analysis and look at the data and science and everything. And get a well-rounded, holistic approach to the SPOs, the policy moving forward. Not only for me and for my parents, but again, for everybody in this district. Because the most fundamental reason that we're all here is for the future of students, for kids who have no say or choice in, um, the proceedings of the school board or the politics. We are not here as political tools. We, we're people, we're humans, and we have futures that matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, comments by board members? Dr. Kohler?
So I just want to say that my vote no today for the seven police officers was not because I disagree with the concept. And the vote did go through. I knew it would go through. So now I really hope that we can move forward and really, really craft some thoughtful policies and think about who we're hiring, put together a task force possibly for hiring. Um, you know, my, my concern and hesitation with voting was that I didn't feel like it was being rolled out properly and ethically. So now that it's being rolled out, let's make sure we do it the right way.
Anyone else? Seeing none? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Evans-Brockett?
So tonight's discussion is clearly part of a larger issue and one that school boards don't generally get involved with. So, I mean, it's beyond sad and upsetting to me that over a decade after Sandy Hook, that we're still having to try to figure out how to keep our kids safe when there is an obvious way to do it. We are the only nation that continues to let this happen. And the answer's always the same after a shooting. We need more guns, more good guys with guns. We've seen how successful that has been. So what I want to say to you is vote. Vote. Vote in every election. You know who wants to end this. And we know how to make it happen. And it's not by adding seven armed officers to our schools.
Anyone else? Dr. Russell?
Thank you, Mr. Saylor. I would like to extend appreciation for the contingency that Ms. White mentioned with the, uh, motion to approve the school police officers. That was something that I was going to request of the board. I would also like to request that at the Policy Committee meeting next week, that we address, we come back to Policy 805.2, which we started a conversation around last month. We continue it. These policies aren't new. They exist. Other districts have them. So we have drafts that we can speak to and work from. And I would like to recommend that they be a part of the conversation next week. In the event we get at least 805.2 to a place, it could move through a second reading in June and be ready to be implemented at the start of the school year. So, um, considerations for that. I'll share more with the board in the weekly communication. But a recommendation that I would like to leave the board with.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayers is going to chair the policy meeting. I will be unavailable that night. 10.03 is a notice of video recording disclaimer. And 10.04 is ruling adjournment.